Okay, there we go. We call this committee of the whole meeting to order on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at six oh one P M. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the line of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anybody like to speak under public participation this evening? Okay, for the record, there is no public participation. We will start with item number four, the M and R reconciliation for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Bounds.
Good evening all. Uh, this is the same one we do every year to true up the maintenance and repair account uh with Veolia. So uh, all the receipts have been given to Peggy's office for review if anyone would like to do that. Uh, this is the best year we've ever done. Um, so just asking council to approve the reconciliation. So we can true up the account in an amount of six thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty-two cents to be expensed from the repairs and maintenance equipment line item.
Questions from the council? Okay, place this on the regular agenda? Okay, we will place item number four on the regular agenda. Okay, next item is item number five, approval of city of Lincoln, Illinois tourism department logo. Mr. McCoy, would you like to step forward? Um, yeah, I can do that.
These are just a couple, well, I'm not sure the other one there is. Um, sorry, these uh, this logo's been in the works obviously since I began. They're trying to get the branding started.
To try to get the branding started because uh, you know, we're obviously in a crunch to get things going. If you have any questions or any little tweaks or anything you'd you'd like uh, or have any suggestions, we're all ears. This is for the Office of Tourism, so this is not for any particular portion of tourism. But it would be the branding that from where everything else comes uh, with the the little Lincoln on there and so forth. These are all uh, hand drawn through a computer, but hand drawn uh, and it's a local artist. And uh, it's, I think it's pretty unique, but it's more of the seal type of a logo to uh, to brand it, so. Any questions or suggestions?
Mr. Parrot and then Mr. Bateman.
Well, I, I don't like either one of them, so I, I, I think we can do a lot better. I, I've seen what Mr. McCoy and what Mr. Welch can do just on designing stuff for the balloons over sixty-six and uh, and other stuff Mr. McCoy's done. I appreciate the artist coming up with this, but I, I just, I just personally don't like either one of them.
Mr. Parrot.
One thing I was gonna mention is we have a Lincoln without a beard and that's how they, I was gonna try to talk about Ron Keller's point of view if he was up here. And I think that would be something that he would have pointed out. What's the beard, what are you known for, right? And I think if you're having people come through town as tourists, they're gonna recognize a Lincoln with a beard, well, so it was out, but that is how Lincoln was, I guess, with his beard.
Uh, and that is correct. And we did uh, run this through several people, including a handful of kids, just because I like to get a little bit of feedback from everybody. As we design all this out, he originally did not have a beard, he originally did not have a hat. Um, I mean, we kind of went through the gamut of a lot of different things. This is the one that everybody said, oh, it's, cause a lot of people were confused at the beginning, well, who is it? Cause we didn't tell them, this is for the Lincoln, you know, city logo or anything like that, and it didn't say Lincoln around it, we were just going for the graphics. So when the, the Lincoln image itself came up, when we added those elements, they went, okay, now it's Abraham Lincoln. I totally understand what you're saying, but it's just a matter of who's gonna see what, recognize it and create that brand. It's also been used, I think, with the hat and beard previously from other aspects in town, but that's just why that is there.
Sure.
Mr. Sanders.
Yeah, um, instead of using the circle, did you think about using water, watermelon?
We've, we tried a little bit of everything, including the Route sixty-six shield as the outside of it. This is what turned out the best, in our opinion, yeah.
Any other feedback for Mr. McCoy?
And I will just say with the watermelon, cause that's, that's interesting, watermelon is difficult to shape. It's a circle or an oval without adding all the other elements, so.
Mr. Downs.
Scott, I'm not the world's biggest art expert, but from my point of view, it looks pretty good. So tell whoever made it, I think they did a good job.
Uh, it's Sarah, how do you pronounce her last name? It's just, ah, gosh.
Tom Zoski.
Tom Z, yeah, I get, um, I can get it for you. Uh, she's actually a local artist. I talked to several in town that could do this or possibly could do this, branding companies and so forth. And she's the one that uh, was able to do really kind of what we wanted to do here. And I wanted to, I actually have.
Tom Azuski.
Tom Azuski, thank you very much. Uh, I actually have other artists on staff with my company, but I really wanted something that came from the community to be the, the face of it. So we wanted to, to hire her. She, she did a fantastic job.
Ms. O'Donohue and then Mr. Anderson, did you have your hand up to, okay.
I don't mind it at all, but it's, uh, looks a little cartoony to me. Is, is it supposed to be?
Cartoony?
Yes.
It's hand drawn, so it's not photorealistic or like the city logo that's a little bit more line art, photorealistic. The idea here is you're seeing like on the page here that you have two. This is actually the same logo, but one's line art and one shade. And then of course, there'd be a color version uh, as well. When you think about all the different shades and colors and things that you use in it and how complex it can be, cause you need to make a stamp out of it, you'll need to put it on letterhead. And in all those aspects, this was kind of the face that, that came up the best. To find somebody that's photorealistic or to use clip art and buy it from some other place, you run into, it looks like the same clip art that somebody else used, you know, everywhere else. Yeah, and because it's tourism, it's not a, this would be inappropriate for like a city letterhead, I think, but as tourism, now uh, the Lincoln himself, because this is hand drawn by the artist. And it's all in uh, A I files, we can do a lot of different things with this. So this is the logo, that's it, it's a seal for the Office of Tourism. Then the Lincoln himself can be posed any way we want, holding the sixty-six sign, holding, you know, doing all kinds of stuff, pointing and all that sort of thing. In those cases, he would be a little more cartoony, and that's why he's here, but they would all match, it would always be the same character.
Mr. Anderson.
Rhonda kind of took the words out of my mouth. I thought cartoony was kind of the same thing. I, personal opinion, if I had to vote on it, I kind of like the face more on the seal up there versus this, but uh, um, I'm not a professional at this, so.
Ms. McClellan.
I just, when I first saw it, I had the same thought, well, it doesn't really look like our Abraham Lincoln, but then I, the two words that came to me were friendly and approachable. And it's like, that's what I think our tourism needs to be, it needs to be friendly and approachable. So it was like, I mean, I have a little bit of a museum background too, so my thought was they're not gonna like that, cause that doesn't look like young Lincoln. Which I understand because that's our heritage with him, but for tourism, it seemed like maybe just something friendly and approachable would be good, so.
Yeah.
But I understand both sides.
When I, when I first saw it, um, the, the word that I had was, it, it seems kind of whimsical, you know? And if you think about the exhibit that we're putting in there and we're trying to get an immersive experience and catch people's attention, that's why I kind of came back to, well, you know, I, I think we're very used to this logo that's here, but maybe this can work, so. Mr. Bateman.
So, Ms. McClellan said, you know, historical, yes, this town was named after that Abraham Lincoln, he named it. But the entire world remembers top hat and beard. So if we're gonna bring people in from out of town, I think we need to think bigger picture here, and it needs to be what, what the rest of the universe thinks of when they think Abraham Lincoln.
Other thoughts? Mr. Sanders.
You'll be able to use this drawing for other things, does that include like making emojis out of it for kids to text with, put on Snapchat and stuff?
It, it'll be anything we want to do with it, literally anything, so again, it's not.
When I look at this image, that's what I see, I see a Snapchat.
Yes, yes.
So it's immersive for.
Right, and it's great that you bring up children because, you know, the museum and visitor center and things to see and do and, and be involved includes, it's a family event, it's a, yeah. So uh, yes, you can do emojis, you can do every, we could do anything that we want to do with this, which was the idea behind it.
Mr. Bateman.
I like the win, whimsical aspect of it, I just wish it was a little bit different design. If you look at a lot of newer logos that are coming out from companies, they are more modern, whimsical looking stuff. So I do like that aspect of it instead of the old copper penny head that we all think of, so. Like I said, I, I just, I think these need a little, little something different, um, but I do like the whimsical beard, top hat part.
Can, and Ms. Bateman brings up a great point. Um, we're typically, we refer to our departments as departments. And I know you and I have spoke about this and that it says the Office of Tourism on the bottom. Can you explain why that is?
Sure, so you have, you have the city departments, and then you have, sorry, that was my phone. Then you have tourism, and tourism is unlike almost any other department that you may, um, it, it does something different than every other department. So you've got a fire, police, streets and all of that. They're serious, they're, they're work, whatever. Here, if we're just another department, fire department, police department, streets department, it's kind of generic, and really it's what most communities do. It's the tourism department, sounds generic. I don't want Lincoln to be generic. And I wanted to set, set it aside, the big guys call them the office, it's the Office of Tourism. So I want to play in the field of, of um, you know, L A, uh, instead of uh, you know, small town or rural town. There's also a little bit of a play on words that's possible with this, which just kind of happened by happenstance, which is the Lincoln Office of Tourism is L O T, lot. So we have a lot to offer or something, we could go down that path too. But it's, it's, yeah, it, it can be corny, it could be not corny, but it's, it's one of those things. But to me and a lot of people, again, you want to stand out, you want it to be something that people recognize and go, wow, that's really, it's not just the tourism department. It's like here, when people ask me, I'm the director of tourism, not tourism director, cause tourism director sounds like a tour guide. It's, it's just, it's a, it's a marketing word choice.
Okay, so thoughts?
You say there was gonna be a colored version of this?
Correct.
Can you have our, send us a copy of what, something like that may look, maybe that'll help Kevin out.
Sure.
Mr. Bateman.
So someone from the, out watching on T V says it kind of reminds them of a police badge.
Oh, because of the Route sixty-six logo. I said the same thing when I first saw it.
Yeah, and actually the one, the, one of them, the mayor's. Well, one of them that the mayor saw too was when we had the sixty-six shield as the outline. And that definitely looked more like the, the police logo or the, or the patches that they have in the badges. Some of this you just can't get away from, cause sixty-six shield is a thing, you can't really change that too much, and it looks like a badge and other insignia that way. I would ask you to keep in mind as well, this is the Office of Tourism logo. This is not the marketing and branding elements. So this is what's in the corner down at the bottom and it's on the business cards. When you have a, come visit us here in Lincoln at the whatever, that's a whole nother thing that will kind of match the look and feel of this. But it's, it's a marketing piece of artwork, it's not just a logo.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is like official letterhead, business cards, down at the bottom, brought to you by the Office of Tourism, Lincoln, Illinois, whatever, things like that, it's, it's more of the official use logo.
Yeah, the other piece to this which hasn't been mentioned is that um, Mr. McCoy is trying to get this logo designed and at least get the council's buy-in on it. So that he can move forward with the website design and some of that other stuff. He's actually, you might not have noticed on his emails, but he, there, we have a new U R L for tourism called LincolnIllinoisTourism.com. And he has an email off of that, so I think he's trying to get that off the ground and, you know, we got a lot of work to do between now and the centennial too, so. The quicker we can get our stuff marketed out there, the better. That being said, do, does the council, are they okay moving forward with this, but want to see colors or what do you, what would you like? Thoughts? Okay, can you get a color variation sent to the council?
Yep, you betcha.
Okay, so can we put the approval on the agenda for next week? I'd like this, the council to actually approve this.
Well, I think they're, they're one and the same ones, just like a outlined version.
Yeah, the, the one with two of them here are exactly the same, it's just a line art and a shaded version of it. This one was just some modifications we were tweaking with, with the mouth, he's not smiling quite as much. And uh, there was a eye change here, and then again, we talked about simplifying it. His beard and his hair are a little more simple, and we weren't thrilled with that, he looks a little more generic. But it, it's just showing you this, you know, some of the tweaks that we've been through. I, I can't give you eighty-seven versions of it that we went through with all the little tweaks, cause I don't even remember them all at this point.
Yeah, okay. All right, let's put this, then we'll put it on the regular agenda for next week. Okay, thank you, Mr. McCoy. Okay, the next item up is item number six, the donation agreement, John Rue's Route sixty-six model train exhibit. And there's a donation agreement in the packet. Mr. Hobblett?
Yeah, so this is the, I believe a model train exhibit that would be going in to, I believe, the purchase of the Broadway building. And you'll see within the agreement that it's contingent upon uh, us closing on said property. The, the property, I'm sorry, the agreements have already been signed by John Rue and Dar, Darlene Rue. If approved by the city, the, the mayor would sign off on it. This is, I believe, an exhibit that's up north, I believe the mayor, if he would like, and Mr. McCoy can speak in greater detail about said exhibit. But this is the agreement around it, that it would be located within, um, located within the, the city of Lincoln's, that five oh one, five hundred to five oh eight Broadway Street property. Where it'll stay, there'll be um, placard, you know, that Mr. Rue gave, Ms. Rue gave up, that gave this to the city. I believe there, the, this kind of popped up because they're interested in moving, and this has been living in this basement for quite some time. And they're looking to make it a new home, and it is, I believe, a train exhibit of the entirety of the old sixty-six, so.
Questions for us on this one? Okay, Mr. Anderson.
Do we have any type of an estimate on what it's gonna take to disassemble this and transport it here and reassemble it once it gets back?
Uh, Mr. McCoy and I had a phone call with a gentleman from Landmarks, and I'll let him share the details of that.
Yeah, Illinois Landmarks, uh, talked with Quinn there, he's going to put a team together that will help us disassemble it and box it up and all of that. And it will be zero cost to the city. We will just have to have a box truck or something that we would drive back down. Other than that, they're gonna totally assist us, and they help preserve things in Illinois, stay in Illinois, buildings and, and so forth, so it's, it was a pretty good deal.
The, yeah, her, Ms. Bateman's question was, are they gonna help us put it back together? I believe that they will have some input, Mr. Rue himself will be down here, and there's a gentleman, his di, his name's in here, Mike Arzon. He's the actual engineer who has done all the mechanical components of this, he'll be involved as well. They've all committed to being involved.
And he means engineer like put it together, he doesn't fit in the trains.
Mr. Downs.
Did you say Landmark is doing the transportation?
Illinois Landmarks, yeah.
They, no, they preserve, that organization preserves landmarks.
Okay.
Historical landmarks.
Oh. Yeah, it's a, it's a preservation group in, in Illinois, yeah, yeah.
No, we're not, we're not gonna let Kevin's people move the, the exhibit. Or Kevin, for that matter. Okay, any other questions? We're kinda placing this on the regular agenda? Okay, next item up is the M F T oil and chip contract for twenty twenty-five. Mr. Landers.
Uh, we've put this uh, list of targets together, the engineers have looked at it and give us a estimated uh, engineer estimate, estimate on it. At uh, three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. This is something that would uh, be taking place later this summer or early fall. Does anybody have any questions regarding it?
Mr. Bateman.
I, I'll just relegate myself to saying this every year, I really wish we could come up with something other than oil and chip, because we all know as councilman and the mayor, the phone will just start ringing with dust and dirt and noise, and it doesn't fix a single thing on the street. It's the same pothole that was there before, it's just a new layer of lipstick on the pig. So I, I, I just wish we would back a little ways away from oil and chip and, and do more quality milling overlay than miles of the same thing.
Mr. Landers.
So for most of these streets, if there are already oil and chip, you're talking about a major reconstruction of the street to asphalt, asphalt, the melon overlay. So you're gonna have to reconstruct the street from the bottom up to be able to do a melon overlay. And basically, oil and chip is, is a maintenance, to seal the street up, to keep, to prevent deterioration, to seal and keep the water out. When we do the scarification part of it, that does, that does fix the surface, levels the surface out and changes, changes some of the drainage also.
So based on the, the miles of road that you're gonna get done with the oil and chip, how would that compare if we used another surface technique such as milling and overlay?
Yeah, I couldn't even begin to tell you the price difference, if, if you're gonna do a reconstruction, you know, it's gonna be significantly more expensive.
And less, less roads.
Yeah, blocks compared to miles.
Yeah, and also another thing I noticed, cause we've, the council's um, been pretty blunt about this in the past, is spreading the love, I guess we call it, across all the wards. And I noticed there's nothing for Ward three in here. Can you, it says in a, can you?
Yeah, there's, there was none for Ward three, Ward three is getting quite a bit of melon overlay done, especially in the downtown area, and they've been heavily in the past.
Okay.
Um, so that's basically why there was, there was nothing for Ward three in there.
From oil and chip?
For oil and chip, yes.
Okay. Mr. Clemmons, you have something?
We did a uh, project on the Mount Auburn block top. It was um, cement tar and uh, tar, and that has held up good, but I just, I don't know what the cost of that is. I mean, I've done a lot of oil and chip roads and.
Are you familiar with the scarification?
Yeah.
Okay. And you know, when they, when they do that, and then they can repair base issues and things like that, and then it, it does a pretty good job. Sometimes you have some issues later on, ravelling on the edges. Sometimes you have some issues later on unraveling on the edges and things like that, but we can go out back and address those with a spray patcher. And we take the spray patcher out ahead of just like a street that we're going to oil and chip only and, and fix some of those, you know, some of those areas that are pretty bad, especially on the edges or they got a place where the road's unraveling quite a bit, we'll go out and spray patch those ahead of the oil and chips so that there's a, a underlying repair before the surf, the new surface is put on.
Mr. Consel.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, I, just point of clarification on this, you, you have, um, scarification oil and trip, oil and chip contract. You mean, there isn't a contract yet, so this is.
This is just the contract to put out for advertising.
This, so it's the, the targets that.
The targets and, and the contract to go ahead and move forward to put those, that contract out for advertising.
For bids, you mean?
It has to be advertised first and then the bidding would take place, yes.
Thank you.
And then the, the last piece, I guess, is worth saying to Mr. Bateman's point. So I know you've been really good about this in the past, but for the people watching, can you make sure that when they're doing the oil and chip, that we make sure we, we prepare for like watering trucks and to keep the dust knocked down?
You have to let it set for a few weeks before you can touch it.
Yep.
So once it's cured and settled in, and then we can go back and start, we'll start wa- watering and sweeping and cleaning up the excess rock.
Okay. All right, anything else for Mr. Landers?
Would you, I can give an update on the current projects going on if you'd like.
Please do, yeah.
Um, so I got word today that the, uh, Rotten should be in town Thursday. Um, they're going to start with the targets out around Walmart, Mall Rich, Herndon, Stewart, Taylor Court. They're going to start out there, so that's a mill, they're going to mill that asphalt up and put new asphalt down. That's going to probably be a four day process, couple days milling and then a couple days, um, laying the asphalt back down. Then they're going to move into the center part of town where we have, uh, Eighth Street, Union, North Union Street, past Kiakut or, yeah, Woodlawn, um, McLean, less portion of Wyatt, Eighth Street in front of Central School. And I'm probably missing some in there, Third Street over by Carol Catholic and the Health Department is another one. Um, so all that should be taking place next week and a half to two weeks. Rail splitter and Heritage will be the last targets.
Yep. Can you give us an update on Tremont too?
Uh, Tremont, we're still trying to work through some issues. Um, we still have to meet with a couple more, meet with the resident again regarding some work. And then we're going to have to move on to the next one after that, there's a couple of them that are going to be trouble spots that we got to kind of work, work with the homeowners and try to get their, get them on board with what we want to do. Um, it's looking like we won't see any work done this year. They're still working on design and grading. Um, so once we get, uh, get some of those agreements together and, and some communication, then we'll just keep moving forward with it.
And then can you give us an update on the Fifth Street Road? I, he, Mr. Landers gave us an update in the department head meeting, so now's a good time to share that.
So I talked to Bryce Brexham with Hanson Professional Services, that's the engineer on the project. The railroad is still holding us up, holding us up, it moved another notch. So it, we got the, the, I'm, I'm not sure how the structure works, but there are comments have been made. It's moved on to the real estate department and the real estate department's the one that creates the, uh, construction and maintenance agreement that the city will have to sign. So it's, it's moved to that department. Um, we were told that they're short staffed right now, it could take a while, we don't know how long. Um, we were hoping to put it on the August letting, it's not going to make it, we're going to still shoot for September. But still, we're so late in the season that we're probably not looking at any construction this, this season.
Okay, questions about that? Mr. Parrot.
I, I figured it was going to be like this, uh, so the question is, is the money that's been budgeted for, for that, is, will it just carry over until next, next?
For.
For Fifth Street, for Tremont?
That's bond, that's the bond money and Mr. Consel can probably explain that a little better. We have a six million dollars, I believe, in bond money available to us, so.
Mr. Consel.
Thank you, uh, yes, that's what Superintendent Landers has just stated is correct. The, uh, the council sometime back authorized, uh, the issuance of up to six million dollars in bonds and the intention was to do it in probably increments of three million, uh, as we start the project and then another three million later so that we're not, uh, paying interest on, uh, money that we can't use. So we, we, we would do that in two increments, but that bond authorization has been passed by the council, I believe is good for three years.
Parrot. So when do we start paying on, I mean, if we're not going to be using the money, we're, we're paying interest on it, right?
No, we, we haven't.
We haven't issued, we have, we have not issued.
We haven't issued them yet, the author, we have the authorization to issue it, but they haven't actually been issued. Once that's done and we, we close on those bonds and we receive the money, that's when the interest would start to.
When, when do we plan on doing that?
It's going to depend on, I guess, you know.
Whenever we go to letting.
Yeah, whenever you do, write the bids for it.
And there will be another delay in there too, uh, be, just because IDOT is going to pay everything. IDOT will get, the way I understand it, don't, don't take my word to heart, but the way I understand it, IDOT pays all the bills and then we end up reimbursing IDOT. So there's still going to be another step in there that's, it's going to take a little bit of time.
My, my, the only thing I'll say then on, um, is in talking with Bryce, has he given you any indication of the possibility of an increase in the cost of this project, the longer it gets delayed?
He hasn't said anything, but that's always a possibility.
That would be my concern.
Sure.
Mr. Parrot.
So if we're not going to be able to do it this fall, we don't have to wait until the next, uh, fiscal year budget to start working on this when we have an opportunity weather wise, right? We can start in the spring when weather becomes.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Now regarding our general budget that we have for our other, we budgeted money for Tremont Street. So I would assume that we're not going to spend hardly any of that money unless we develop another program. But I would strongly suggest just stocking it back because we don't know how much Tremont Street is going to cost us. I want to say we had, we budgeted around six or seven hundred thousand for this year and then we rolled over money from last year, the, the projects that we didn't get done last year. So I would, I would recommend we'd have spent minimal of that, that money that was budgeted and carry it over for next year because we don't know where bids are going to come back at, you know, once we get ready to let that project.
Parrot.
And then for Tremont, so we always anticipated a two-year, but a potentially two-year longer perhaps now. Would we be able to, and then because of cost or because of the ability to have everything in place?
The amount of work.
Amount of work, right, so we're, we're.
You have to do things in order, you know, you, you know, you got to do the ramps and the curbs and then you got to come back and do the sidewalks or the ramps, curbs and sidewalks and then you come back and do the reconstruction, because that's a complete reconstruction of the street.
Right.
So then you come back and do the street after you get all those things done. It's just the amount of work's there, I don't see it getting done in, in one season.
But I guess, I guess my question would be now, is it going to be three, three years?
Well, we haven't started the project yet, really, so just engineering, so.
It's three years.
Yeah, I would say, you know, next, if we can get it shovel in the ground next spring and then it should get finished up the following season, so it'll still be two seasons.
Okay, I'm, I'm.
That's, that's what I'm assuming, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Landers? Place this on the regular agenda? Okay. Place item number seven on the regular agenda, uh, brings us down to number eight, ordinance implementing a municipal grocery retailer's occupation tax and a municipal grocery service occupation tax for the city of Lincoln, Illinois, Mr. Hobblett.
So I believe I have mentioned to the council and for the, for the members that aren't here, uh, to your free guys' benefit, uh, last year, assigned into law that, that right now, the municipalities in, within the state of Illinois enjoy a, uh, one percent grocery tax. There was, um, I believe, uh, within the Illinois legislature passed a law that Rue would remove that one percent tax, but would include a provision, um, that if municipality were to vote on it, they can keep the one percent tax. Many municipalities around, uh, the state of Illinois have been passing to keep this one percent grocery tax. I believe this grocery tax, um, I believe at the time of its passing, it, I think it almost went to the sixty days uh, because I believe Governor Pritzker didn't want, I think they just, I think he just wanted this one percent, one percent tax to go away. Um, for various political reasons, I believe, at the, at the time. Um, we won't, we don't need to get into that though. Uh, but be that as it may, most municipalities have been passing to keep this grocery tax. If the, if the city council opts to do this, the taxes do not go up. Um, uh, but I suppose, you know, you can make an argument that they would go down come January first, twenty twenty-six by a one percent. Um, so, and this, if you guys want to keep this grocery tax, it has to be passed and into the hands of the state of Illinois for notice, no later than October first, so really September thirtieth. So, um, that's why I believe it's coming before you now. So if you want to consider this now, you can pass it and have it sent off, so.
Mr. Consel.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, and thank you, uh, City Attorney Hobblett for that very excellent summary of, of the situation. Uh, there are a couple of additional facts you might want to be aware of. Uh, other municipalities that I have read about so far have, just about every one of them has, has voted to retain this tax. And I use the word retain because it's already a tax that's collected by the state and then forwarded to the city. The other thing is, based on what the information from the Illinois Municipal League, if we, if you do not pass this, uh, this ordinance, uh, it would be a, we'd lose about five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, uh, that we would lose, this is a source of revenue that amounts to about five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So you might want to cut something out of the appropriation ordinance because you're not going to have money to pay for it. Uh, how much this affects an individual or a family, if you spend, and I don't know how much, you know, what an average would be, but say you spend five hundred dollars a week on groceries, uh, this is five dollars. Just kind of put it in perspective.
Mr. Bateman.
So I, I, I don't, I don't vote to raise property taxes on people, but, but this is a tax that we're already paying as Mr. Consel stated, um, and, and the city attorney alluded to. This is a tax that the state collected and passed it through to the municipality. So when Pritzker did this, he didn't do anything to the state budget because the money passed through. So he did it for political gain, to make himself look good, even though it, he's raising taxes on everything else under the planet. Um, unless he hasn't looked everywhere under the planet yet. Um, so that being said, I kind of did some questionnaires with some citizens and I, I've looked it up. Every city that has brought this forward has voted to retain it because it is a large portion of their budget. And, um, the citizens I've talked to, I haven't had any yet that said, uh, no, I want the savings because it's one percent and it's only on grocery items. So, um, at this point, I would vote to retain this tax because it's not a new tax. He has just basically put the burden on the cities because it's not affecting the state budget at all.
Mr. Clemens.
I'm sorry, but I disagree, I don't, I've heard from people, one percent's one percent, okay? And with the, uh, taxes that the governor is now imposing, I think we need to give the taxpayers a break. Uh, I'm just, I would vote no for it.
Mr. Anderson.
So, or probably a lot of our neighboring communities are already going to pass this or working on passing this too. So, so they're going to have that one percent already at their town, at their grocery store. Um, I think if we don't move forward with it and keep it, you know, it's not a new tax, we're just continuing on what's there. I think we're going to be missing out on a lot if we don't continue to keep it. I'm not in favor of raising the taxes and we're not raising, we're just keeping it the same.
Any other, Mr. Donahue?
I think we also have to look at, it's not just people who live in Lincoln that this pertains to. I mean, it's people who come from out of town, people who are staying here and buying groceries. Every time somebody comes here for a sporting event, they're buying Gatorades, they're buying, so it's not just the city of Lincoln absorbing the one percent. It's people coming from out of town, people coming from the neighboring, neighboring communities just to do their shopping. I, I look at it, that's how I look at it, is it's not just citizens of Lincoln having to, to carry that burden. It's people who come from out of town are also supporting that, so.
Mr. Parrot.
So is this a one percent, um, only at grocery stores or is this for like all food and beverage products? So for example, if they go to like the gas station, are they paying the one percent?
Grocery retailers.
That's what I'm asking, if it's, if it's a consumable, you know, beverage or, um, a food product, so like if you go to a bar and you're drinking, you know, there, are you paying the one percent as well?
You're, you're paying the full, full sales tax on that, whatever, you know, eight point.
I would assume you're talking about grocery stores, convenience stores, things like that, correct?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I, I don't, Mr. Parrot, I don't believe this is for onsite consumption of anything or like a restaurant, like food that they prepare.
Okay.
Or like say, you know, like a soda that you consume, like say at a restaurant or with your example, like, like, I would assume an alcoholic drink at a bar, that's not, this is, this is for groceries, like packaged items.
Okay.
You know, uh, it could be in a grocery store or not, in a grocery store, it could be in a gas station, you know, where you buy, like I said, a Gatorade.
Thank you.
Mr. Consel.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I was just going to say those other items would be subject to whatever the tax rate is, the eight point seven five percent or depending on where in the state you buy it, it would be subject to that. If you look at your grocery receipt, when you go grocery shopping, it'll be in the, it'll break it down as to, uh, uh, you know, which tax rate they're subject to.
When was this one percent, um, implemented?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, I can try to find out, but it's been decades as, as the city attorney said. Yeah, it's been there for a long, long time.
Mr. Anderson.
Kind of piggyback a little bit with what Rh- with what Rhonda said there. It's going to be the same thing as we're traveling to different communities and buying our groceries at the convenience stores and, and, uh, maybe for a weekend ball game tournament or something like that, we're going to be paying that, that tax there too, providing that community's got the, the one percent.
Yeah, I, I, for me, and I don't have a vote in this matter, but, um, it is the fact that we're not raising the tax, we're maintaining the tax that's in there. Um, but the, the downside to that is if we choose not to retain that tax, we're going to have to start making some cuts elsewhere and, um, we just got our police and fire staff back up to where they need to be. We got the equipment we need for roads. Um, the budget this year, when I went to the department heads, I asked them to be very frugal and, and make other cuts and we were only talking about, what, like fifty thousand dollars or something? We'd have to make a half a million dollars worth of cuts elsewhere in this case or take a hit to the general fund and we go backwards, um, with the growth that we've made so far and moving forward, we just compromise other things in doing so. It's a tough decision. Other thoughts, comments? And place this on the regular agenda? Okay, next item up is item number nine, MGT Impact Solutions LLC, formerly Gov HR USA Compensation Study. Uh, Mr. Parrot or Ms. Bateman?
Yes, um, so Gov HR, um, was I think bought by another, uh, entity and a part of the, um, uh, when we got the, the contract to come in, uh, Ms. Bateman noticed it. Uh, and so we really have to vote on, um, the new, uh, entity, you know, from what was shared with the, the council. Also, uh, noticed and, and I hadn't had a, a chance to look at any email from last week, um, when I was gone. Um, but I did ask them to include, um, in, in a new quote, to also include a, a total, um, compensation study to include, uh, benefits and I think that was going to be an additional, um.
Was it three thousand?
I think it was less than three.
Twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, twenty-five hundred. So I'm not for sure exactly, I'm, because I'm having computer. So I'm not for sure exactly, because I'm having computer problems signing in. I'm not for sure exactly, did they send a new?
Yeah, it's in the packet. So in, I think it was June, when you voted on the other one, you had not to exceed ten thousand. This one with the benefit package will be eleven thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars.
Which is still less than, I think, the thirteen seven from the other, I think it was thirteen seven from the other entity that, that provided, you know, their, their quote.
We're just approving an additional twelve hundred dollars. And the name. Like twenty-five. It's a completely new contract.
The whole packet that shows how they do it is in, the whole document showing how they do it is in the packet.
So this, this document doesn't have the benefit cost included, does it? Oh, it is on the last page? I was looking at page sixteen.
Yeah, without the benefit packages, eight thousand some odd dollars.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, without the benefit package, it was eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. With the benefit package is a total of eleven thousand, four seventy.
Okay.
Do we know what the timeframe is of how long this study is going to take?
I think if I remember correctly, it was, it's in the, it's in there, I just hadn't had a chance to open up. But I'm trying to remember if it was three months, I think? Three or four months?
Approximately twelve weeks.
Okay. Counsel, okay, putting this on the regular agenda? Okay. We'll place item number nine on the regular agenda. Next item up is item number ten, ordinance appropriating funds for all government purposes for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Treasurer Konzo.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you've all received the copies of it. Didn't have too many questions after I sent it out. I do want to thank Alderman Sanders, Alderwoman McClellan, especially for the time that they put working on this document, as well as each and every one of the department heads who also spent considerable time working on this. And I, in my opinion, have done their best to, to contain the costs and, and not to, not to go overboard with it. Keep in mind the difference between the budget and the appropriation. The budget is, for the most part, what we intend to spend, the appropriation is what we can spend if there's a need for it. And if there is a mon, there is money available to do that. There were a couple of things in there that we did not anticipate in the, at the time the budget resolution was brought forward and at the time it was passed. And those include some software, which I couldn't even begin to explain to you. But there are people here who could, I am not one of them. But I have been told in talking with, in particular, talking with the, with the mayor and others, that there is a need for software. My recommendation was just order forms in triplicate or quadruple, fill them out, but, yeah.
It's our GoGov app and the permitting that the city code enforcement officer uses. And Mr. Lander's department uses that as well, it's for that.
I believe you.
I just wanted the counsel to know what that, what that was for. And it's not just the app, keep in mind that, because we talked about this too. This is whenever you use the app, it goes into the backend, Wes's office works off of that. When you, when complaints are called in by phone, they still put it in the system and track it. Mr. Lander's office uses it for service work as well. And then the new permitting forms are in that app as well. So it started out as an app to track the work we're doing, we're now finding other purposes and uses for it. And I, I believe it's worked out very well, our department heads could tell you how it works for their departments.
That's really all I, that's, unless there are any other questions.
Any questions for Mr. Konzo or Ms. McClellan or Mr. Sanders, who's on the Budget Committee and worked with the treasurer? Okay, so place this on the regular agenda? Okay, we will place item number ten on the regular agenda. Okay, that brings us down to announcements. First up, Mr. Bounds has a topic to bring before the council that was not on the agenda. Mr. Bounds?
Yes, I apologize as all for not getting this in the packet. We were waiting for more quotes to come in, we have secured those now. So this was a project to replace the RAS VFDs at the plant. We've got four RAS pumps, we replaced all four pumps over the last two years. It's now time to replace the VFDs. Asking council to approve fifty-five thousand, one hundred dollars to come out of the capital expense equipment fund. This was budgeted for and the budget will support it. If anyone's got any questions, I'd love to try to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Bounds? Mr. Konzo?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one, you say previous fiscal year, you mean the immediate fiscal year? Because in the memo, you talk about two fiscal years. So this would cover part of two years, or that, is that not accurate?
Mr. Konzo, I'm not sure what you're asking.
Okay. It's, you've got in here to reconcile previous fiscal year M and R expenses. So you're, you're talking about twenty-four, twenty-five? Or you're talking about?
Twenty-four, twenty-five for the M and R, but that's not what we're talking here. That's the, that's the one that was in the agenda. The one that we're talking about now is the return activated sludge variable frequency drive replacements.
Right, and in, in the recommendation, you say, you mentioned previous fiscal year. You mean the previous to this year or previous to the year that was mentioned?
I see what you're talking about now, Chuck. That is, that is just a line that is erroneously in there.
Okay. Okay. So there's no previous fiscal year involved, right?
No, this is what happens when you, you get quotes back in at the eleventh hour and try to rush it out.
Yes, yes, yes.
Talking on the department head meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Bounds? Okay, place this item on the regular agenda for next week? Okay, we'll place that item on there. Okay, next item up. I had an individual reach out to me recently and I've had a couple of requests in the past. And I told them that I would bring this before the council. And so I would like to bring up the topic of quiet zones, again, for the trains that go through town. And I believe Mr. Woodhull has done some research on this in the past. And so I'd ask him to speak, I think Mr. Konzo's done some research that he'd like to share. And then would like some direction from the council as to how you'd like to proceed. Mr. Woodhull?
I didn't do any new research.
You can share the old research.
I did a lot last time and I don't remember it, but at the time, the council voted it down. I think we put a poll, a public opinion poll out, just to see what people thought. And that was a no, I don't remember the numbers or anything like that. So it's a, it's a concept that's all over. Keep in mind, I believe as recently as April of twenty twenty-five, there was a little over a thousand of these quiet zones in the country, in the whole nation. My opinion, my personal opinion is that it's a bad idea for safety reasons, that's why it's there.
Can you explain what a quiet zone is to those?
No horns, no. Now, they have, they have every ability to do so in an emergency situation or as they see fit. But legally, from the FRA, they have to, there's a pattern, whether it be one short, two long, or different patterns as they come up to the crossings. With the high-speed rail upgrades, this, the main line in Lincoln is primarily set up to accomplish that. It's a lot of work, a lot of paperwork, logistics with the Federal Railroad Administration and whatnot. But just in the research I did, and that was even standing at the crossroads and watching, you know, unfortunately, I saw people, I saw one kid, unfortunately, he got pretty hurt, but it was, you know, staring at his phone with earbuds in and the crossing went down right as his head was there. The horns were blaring, he didn't hear him. Luckily, he hit his face on that crossing or he walked onto the tracks. Now, that was a ways away, but that's why everything's there. I mean, it's just, it's, you know, it's a safety thing. And now the other lines in, in town, if that's a concern, that is, you're talking a monumental amount of money. I don't even want to fathom what they are, what that cost would be because every crossing has to be upgraded with one, two, three, eight different crossing bar, you have the fencing that they put in for the higher, all that needs to go in. So that's a, financially, that's, that would be huge. Like I said, I wouldn't even guess what that would be, but.
I believe this week it was indicated, maybe Mr. Konzo told me that there's an inherent cost. If we put a quiet zone in, we take responsibility for maintenance of the crossings, is that accurate?
Yes, and that's the other part, which is even greater.
Okay, Mr. Sanders and then Mr. Konzo.
Yeah, it's a bad idea because of the way our town's set up. We have people walking from bar to bar across those tracks all the time.
Well, like I said, this was.
About eight years ago, wasn't this eight or nine years ago?
A sober kid, or maybe it was a kid anyways, not going from bar to bar at night. This was broad daylight with headphones and just the way it is.
You can correct me if I'm wrong, but about eight or nine years ago, somebody was hit by a train walking from bar to bar.
Happens, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So it's a bad idea and our liability will double easily.
Mr. Konzo.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Sanders, Alderman Bateman are, are exactly correct on that. The liability insurance will, we already spend over a million dollars on that. About six hundred thousand of that is, is workman's comp. And another four hundred thousand is for everything else. You can expect that to go up, you know, probably double. So that's just, you know, just an estimate. The other thing about that you have to realize too, even though, you know, first of all, Union Pacific Railroad and every railroad is opposed to this. Why, you know? It's because it's a bad idea because people get hit with trains when they do it. Sometimes they do anyway because they're, you know, they got the radio turned up in the car or they got earbuds or something else that, that drowns out the sound of the horns, but at least there's a, a chance that they will hear it. I've read some interesting things about it. First of all, I'd like to go back to that poll that Superintendent Woodhull just mentioned. At the time, forty-five point eight-three percent said they were against it, thirty-seven point nine-two percent were in favor of it. Eight point seven-five percent said they wouldn't notice, I don't know what that means. And seven point five percent said they need more information. So there's a lot of things about, a lot of reasons it's a bad idea, and I think those have been mentioned. One is that we would assume the cost because Union Pacific puts those signals and things in with the intention that they aren't going to be a quiet zone. Once you authorize that, you're going around them, so to speak, and you're taking responsibility for it. So now you've got, you know, the, the cost of maintaining and upgrading and maintaining the signal system, and you've got the liability insurance. There are lawyers who specialize in this, and this, this gentleman's pretty interesting. I've read a lot of what he's written, his name is William Brotherton, and he's with the Brotherton Law Office, which is in the Dallas, Texas area. And he wrote, he's written several things about it. He used to be a Union Pacific conductor at one time and then became a lawyer later. And I, I've got an article here that I printed, he's written, he specializes in this. So you'll probably get to know him real well if you enact this quiet zone because he'll probably be representing somebody. It's a misfortune of suffering as a result of it. But anyway, the bottom line on it that he wrote, he says, if quiet zones continue to multiply, we're going to see a lot more injuries and deaths because those train horns were never heard. And I think that summarizes it pretty well. If you want more information, I'm not going to bore you with all of it tonight, but I've got plenty more here if you want to see it.
Okay. So is, does the council wish to have Mr. Woodhull pursue this or are we fine as is? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, the last item I got for announcements is Third Fridays is this week. It is, yeah, it came up real quick, Shark Week, and it's water features, inflatables, things of that nature. I, I don't know what the weather forecast is supposed to be, do you?
I think it's supposed to be fine.
Supposed to be fine, good. I've been so busy, I haven't looked at the forecast. So if you can come down, it's the last one of the year, please do. Again, we're looking for volunteers, I think we need four more people. Three, okay, three more volunteers. The link for that is on the Third Friday's Facebook page if you're interested. And then after Third Friday's wraps up, we're already starting to talk about movie nights again in the park. And we'll, we'll go for that. I think this time for movie nights, we're going to put some movies out there and then ask people what they want to watch, let them vote on it. So I think that'll be fun. There you go.
Family-friendly.
Yeah. Back in the day. Okay, that is all the announcements I have. Mr. Parrot?
I, I have two things. I was trying to look on our, on our website for the residential sewer rebate program, is that on our website somewhere?
Uh, it used to be. If not, if not, Mr. Bounds.
The old one you can't get to, it takes you to a full.
Has that information. And Ms. Bateman, might your office have it as well? Yep. It is not on here, so if we're looking for that, Mr. Bounds or Ms. Bateman can get that for you.
Okay, yeah, I was, a neighbor was asking about it. And then the other thing, and, and perhaps Scott might want to chime in as well too. The, the city, we don't have transportation for folks, you know, we don't have taxis, we don't have Uber, we don't have Lyft or anything like that. And I don't know, you know, what the potential of more people coming in on the train, perhaps looking to get around and such. I don't know what we can do as a city. I know these are businesses that, you know, would come to the city for whatever. But what can we do to help encourage, because I think we're missing an op, we'll be missing an opportunity, have missed opportunities for, for folks to kind of, you know, get from place to place.
Yep, so I can tell you what I've been doing in that. And then I know Mr. Bateman's been looking into some things. He, he actually would like to bring before the council a proposal to modify the cab ordinance to allow for a higher rate. I think it's like at five dollars right now, a ride, and, is it three? So, and, yeah, and it's got a bunch of zones and stuff. So he's been talking about that, but I actually had Ms. Metelko reach out to Capsule and talk with them. They have all of those show buses that are out there, they've actually got a fleet of them, some, you know, need repairs, others don't. And so we're setting up time to meet with Bree and Titus out, out there and talk about the program, see what the city can do, if anything, to help that, maybe expand the show bus routes, put more buses in operation. But I don't think that'll solve the full problem. I think cabs and Ubers is probably where people are going to need those in the off-hours, that show buses don't run. If you'd like to be involved in that, glad to send you the invite as well. Okay. Mr. Bateman, did you have something? Well, both.
So, so on this topic, I just want to clarify for everybody that the city currently has no ordinance against Uber or Lyft or any rideshare service. So I know that goes out there on the old interwebs that, you know, we don't allow that, that's not true. Anybody can be an Uber driver, Lyft driver, whatever, we don't have an ordinance that's against that. What I have been discussing with Mr. Welch is that our cab ordinance has a cap on what they can charge for a ride fee, and it is ridiculously low. I, I don't see a company even interested in becoming a cab company in this town. When they look at our ordinance, it, it's just not.
our, our ordinance, it, it's just not fiscally, uh, responsible for them to be a cab, uh, ride, so I, I've been working on other stuff because of the festival coming up. I told Mr. Welch I'd try to get it on the cow, I will get it on this next cow, that we need to revisit our cab ordinance and discuss a more modified fee structure, or my opinion, eliminate the fee cap, uh, and just, you know, if, if you're, if you're gonna be a cab company in this town, if you charge too much, people aren't gonna ride in it, so they, they need to determine what their profit margin is and whether people can ride. Um, that's all I got on this topic.
Anything else on transportation? Okay, next topic.
So we're knocking on the door of thirty days to the Balloons Over Sixty-Six Festival. Um, I'll probably bring this up each time I get a chance to announce, announce, uh, this, uh, I know I don't talk much, but I'm gonna change my ways. We don't have any volunteers, and this festival will not survive if we don't get some volunteers to help. Um, the downtown portion this year is run by five elderly gentlemen and a middle-aged man, and our portion actually runs from four or five in the morning with the barbecue part, till now midnight because of the bands. So we're needing volunteers, I have it out there on Sign Up Genius, I'm only asking for two hours of your time, or you can modify it to an hour. You'll get a lovely free t-shirt out of it. Um, talking with Mrs. Bateman on the way here, I have it on Sign Up Genius as crowd control and general cleanup. Obviously, that might be turning people off, I just need people to show up, have a good time, we'll hand you some wristbands so that you can put it on the people that's inside the hospitality tent in the area, and just, you know, help out with, uh, maybe some IDing some people that you might be, think is too young to partake, um, so you're gonna have to be at least eighteen to do that part, but, um, i- it's just helping out, make it, pointing people in the right direction if they ask you questions, making sure people stay orderly, pointed out to the officers that we'll have downtown, uh, if you see something out of line, but we're, we're really needing some volunteers, because quite honestly, us sixty-plus-year-old people just don't have the Energizer battery to run from five in the morning till, till midnight, two days in a row. So, and get up on Sunday to make sure there's nothing left downtown, uh, when we open the streets, so greatly appreciate it. Uh, again, it's on Sign Up Genius, or you can go to the, you look up Balloons Over Sixty-Six on Sign Up Genius, or go to the Balloons Over Sixty-Six Facebook page, you can find the link and sign up there. The only requirement is, please, you know, state who you are, what time you'd like to work, grab a couple friends and give us a t-shirt size.
Okay, thank you, any other announcements? Okay, if there are no other announcements, I'd like to request a motion to go into executive session under two C eleven litigation and two C one personnel.
Make a motion, two C eleven litigation, two C one.
I'll second.
Ms. O'Donohue made the motion, Mr. Clemmons second, roll call please.
Mr. Clemmons? Mrs. O'Donohue? Yes. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mrs. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. Parrot?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Okay, going into executive session at seven oh nine PM, there may be city business to follow.